Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, October 19th, 2020. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 6th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 6th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 6th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. On October 5th, 2020, a notice was sent to both the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger that this meeting would be held remotely using communication equipment via Zoom due to COVID-19 restrictions. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. And for those applicants who have applications before the board tonight, we will leave you in the audience until your application is called. Then, if you could please raise your hand, we'll move you into the meeting, and then when you're done, you can move back out. We'll do the same when the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell has been excused. Mr. Orozco has been excused. Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the republic, and to my nation, and to the liberty of the Constitution. Mr. Tropo, you mind swearing in the board professionals?
Board professionals remain standing. The testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
The record should reflect tonight. We have Mr. Cunliffe, Mr. Howard, Ms. Beam, and Ms. Spiro, all sworn for the record.
Thank you, sir. You will have a pool of minutes.
I have no minutes this evening.
Vouchers.
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence.
I have no correspondence, but I would like to remind the board that we're almost at the end of the year, believe it or not. So, the Rules Committee needs to start thinking about possible dates, and whether they're going to have an actual meeting, or is it going to be a Zoom meeting? I will also be sending everyone a list of possible dates for next year. If we want to start looking at them, to discuss them at a future meeting, I would appreciate just review them, see what you think. And that's all I have.
Okay, and as far as the, we'll just kind of take a straw poll. If people want to try to meet somewhere, or we're going to do it Zoom, you know, I'll just put that, put that out there, and then we can discuss that at a later time. Okay, resolutions. Case number BA 1912. Damian Mazolci, resolution, grant approval for a chicken coop. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Orozco, Cantor, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Please put your name whenever you make a motion. I can't see.
Moretti. I second it.
Moretti, who made the motion?
Matt Hughes.
Matt Hughes made the motion. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti? I mean, excuse me. Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell is absent. Mr. Orozco is absent. Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Case number BA 20103, Robert Weir, resolution granting a bulk variance to construct a single-family dwelling with septic system. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Orozco, Cantor, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve. Mertens.
Mertens. Do I have a second?
Second, if you're ready.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Okay, thank you. Okay, application before the board. I'm just scrolling through to see. Okay, that's good order. Okay, application before the board. And I, case number BA 17-10, Justin and Israel Tal, extension of time. Application, Justin Israel Tal, as applicant owner seeking an extension of time of use variance approval for waiver site plan granted by the board due to resolution memorialized on November 13th, 2017, on premises known as Block 182, Block 1346 Yellow Brook Road. Okay, at this time, as directed by our attorney, I'm going to recuse myself from this application and turn it over to Mr. Seiya. Hello?
I got it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I'm going to have to log back in. I don't know what happened to me.
We'll just move you out, Wendell. Hold on.
No, I, I don't even know where you are now.
No, that's all right. Just, we're going to move you out for a few minutes.
Okay, I need to find the meeting though.
Okay.
There you go.
Paul, you can go ahead. Attorney Rensler is on here, so he is the attorney for the applicant?
Roger. So, Wendell's already called it. This is a request for extension of time, and there's a board engineer's review letter.
You can go ahead.
Yes, Attorney Rensler would like to present.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, boards professionals, my name is John Renshaw. I'm an attorney at Sonne Blake Parker &amp; Selvers, representing Justin Tal and his father, Israel Tal, in this application for an extension of time on certain site plan improvements that have to be completed. Mr., I can see Mr. Tal down there right now. Justin's going to go through a few questions. Basically, the list of work he's completed, the work that has to be completed, and the reasons for the delay in completing the work.
Well, before we begin, Counselor, let me swear in, Mr. Tal. I presume that you'll have a, he'll have a brief summary of where we're at.
Yes.
I mean, technically, the board does not look for extensive, let's say, testimony, so I'll just guide you in that regard. So, Mr. Tal, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
And put your hand down, please, and state your name.
Justin Tal.
All right, Counselor, you're a witness.
Yes. Good evening, Justin. Could you just run through for the board the work that's been completed to date?
Okay, my location is basically used as my residence and landscape yard. In terms of work that we have completed, we have completed fencing the property to screen our trucks, equipment, and materials from the roadway, which is Yellow Brook Road. We have completed privacy tree installation surrounding and the front property, again, for screening purposes. We have installed our storage units, our plant material storage location, and our hard, our hardscape material storage location, basically making the property usable and also making it beautiful. We have completed all of the engineering required as far as farmland buffer, right-of-way, some things that were part of the resolution. We have done all base preparation for pavement, that's for asphalt pavement. So, we have done our compacted stone foundations, and we have done general improvements to the property, the building, the surrounding areas. So, that is the work completed. As far as some additional required work, which is basically what we're here to ask for an extension for, are the largest ticket items, which are the actual asphalt paving, which is item one, and item two is a concrete pad with a collection system for the parking of some of the vehicles. So, that was planned for spring of 2020 this past year. Those are pretty much the only two remaining items on the list of what was required for the resolution. As far as reason for the delay, again, the anticipation was to complete these two tasks in early spring of this season. COVID came around right at about the time of our startup. We are a seasonal company. So, we start up in about April. COVID came about in March, and about 60% of my business pretty much was affected as far as the installation end of our company, whether it had been permits being unavailable, township permits, you know, not being released. A lot of our clients put projects on hold. We did keep the employees paid, you know, as a long-term investment to our company, just because my employees have been with me for a long time. So, we did put that and the structure of the company ahead of the required investments in the property, because I can't afford the property without the business running and, you know, helping with that aspect of it. So, we did have every intention of completing by November of this year, which is what our deadline is. But, but I am asking for an extension just to have some time to get my company back on my feet. You know, if we were running normal, we would have been completed. We basically run from about April until November, so we are seasonal. We don't do snow removal in the winters. So, we basically came out of this winter with the anticipation of starting up our operations and finishing our improvements, and that was not feasible. I am asking for a, for an extension of two years to implement and complete the two portions of my project that are remaining. I have put together a budget and phase plan, so we do have asphalt paving planned for, hopefully, late spring, early summer of 2021, and the concrete pad and drainage compartment for late spring, early summer of 2022. And that will pretty much complete all of the necessary items on my property. Those two tasks do come to between $50,000 to $60,000, so it is a large portion of the project. And just, you know, with the way, you know, we're going into winter, we can't pave, we can't pour concrete, backorder of materials, you know, if I just put a, put behind me the aspect of, you know, needing to be able to budget this for this year, for instance, there isn't a timeframe available to allow this before the winter. But like I said, you know, COVID did crush our season, as it did to many companies and seasonal businesses. We are working around the clock to try and get back on our feet, but we are asking for a two-year extension. I am well aware that generally the board does grant a one-year extension on cases like this. But, you know, the way we're sitting here tonight, nothing is normal at this point. So, you know, I'm open to any questions or anything that you would like me to elaborate on, Mr. Renshaw as well.
John, before we go forward, I just want to clarify. The board memorialized the use variance on November 13th, 2017, correct?
Yes.
And that provided a two-year window, right?
Yes.
So, that brings us up to 2019. And if I understood the testimony correctly, your client indicated that 2022 was when they planned on finishing?
Well, the, the second phase of it with doing the concrete and the water collection drainage system.
But that's all part of the use variance, right?
Yes.
So, wouldn't you need three one-year extensions? Or am I, Jen, what do you think? Am I missing something here? It looks like you need all of your extensions right now.
We didn't ever get an extension yet.
No, I understand that, but you need.
They'd have to backdate one, Justin.
Right, but if you're asking for extension, it's from 2019, not 2020, so.
That's correct.
It'd be three one-year extensions, yes.
Right, I agree with that, John.
Yes, it's correct.
Would that be the application?
Yes.
To extend through November 13th, 2022?
Yes. It's just with COVID, it's kind of hard to get a set pattern on it, so.
I, I understand. So, we're putting all of the extensions on the table now, so that your client can complete.
Unless Justin wants to go for two and then come back, just in case for.
I put together a pretty elaborate plan and budget plan, and I can comfortably say I would be able to meet my, you know, requested extension. Again, we're not within.
Right, but what we're saying is that you're requesting two years today.
Correct.
But really, the.
It's three years.
You're asking the extension is a year ago, so it's three, not two.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
Right, it's from November 2019, so you're asking for two years from today, which would be three one-year extensions from the November date, November 2019 date, correct?
That's correct.
I agree. Anything else, John?
No, pretty, Justin pretty summed, summed it up pretty good, where he's at right now.
I haven't stopped my improvements on the property. I mean, we are still, day by day, week by week, working on improvements. It's just the two final tasks, again, we were hit pretty hard come this spring, and that has pushed everything back. So, I didn't, you know, come to the property and leave everything for last minute. If you drive by the property, it's probably the best kept up within the area.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Charlie?
So, you know, I think one of the concerns that I have is obviously the approval goes back to 2017. We're now almost three years from the pre, you know, from the approval, and the use was granted on these site improvements being completed. And, you know, the operation is ongoing on the site without these improvements being completed. You know, I know, Mr., you know, I think the board is cognizant, obviously, COVID did throw a lot of kinks in the works with a lot of, you know, commercial operations and things like that. But, you know, to my knowledge, you know, asphalt has still been readily available, you know, concrete has still been readily available. Obviously, there's, there's a financial burden, you know, purchasing those materials. My concern would just be for the board is, you know, this is another, you know, year and a half potential that the operation continues to go on on the site without completion of the site improvement. So, so I guess the, the two years would effectively take it to November of this year. Is that correct? And then the three years would take it to November of 2021?
No, two years would take it to next year.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be to the board is, if they're going to grant an extension, you know, it should be to two years. And then if the applicant wants to come at a later point and request another year after that, that would might be my recommendation. You know, I think the asphalt coming in onto Yellow Brook Road there is, you know, for not tracking gravel onto the roadway and things like that. And then obviously, you know, the concrete pads were for the vehicles that are parked on the back there. You know, my concern is just the use was granted on these site improvements being completed. And, you know, the longer that this goes, you know, I'm just concerned, you know, that it creates issues for, you know, adjoining properties and complaints and concerns from the, from the neighboring properties. That, that would be my recommendation to the board. If they're going to grant an extension, it'd be for two years. And then if the applicant wants to come back and seek a, you know, a year thereafter, that, that would be my recommendation to the board.
John, did you want to respond to that? As I, I think the board is inclined to grant an extension, but, you know, hearing the engineers' comments.
It, it's a matter of time. Justin, have there been any complaints from your neighbors at all?
I have very good relationships with both my neighbors, well, most of my adjoining neighbors. And no, I have not had any complaints.
And, and do you keep the, the front of the drive clean on Yellow Brook?
Absolutely.
No further questions.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Charlie that, you know, two years, which would bring it to November of next year, is, I think, more reasonable, and that, you know, between pavement or whatever, it's a year plus from today. I think that's more than enough time, and if they need to come back, they can come back after that. But I do agree with Charlie that one, like, a year from today, which is a two-year extension from their approval, could provide them with adequate time to do what they need to do.
Ron? Before I ask the board members if they had any questions?
Well, the applicant doesn't lose anything, Mr. Seiya, by coming back. And if anything, if what I'm hearing from Jen and from Charlie is that, while there's an understanding and an acknowledgement that the applicant has had some financial problems, it's sort of like putting the spur to the applicant, in a sense, to keep him moving perhaps a little more quicker than he would like to, which kind of keeps the onus on the applicant, the burden on the applicant. So, you know, I'm not against two years, but really, it's your call as a board to make that determination. But basically, it sort of keeps the applicant moving. You know, in other words, if you have a lot of time, you might consider that you'll use all the time. Maybe by bringing it up like this, the applicant might be encouraged to finish it within two years. Again, that's just my comment, but I'll leave it to your, your better judgment.
Encouraged to finish it this spring, but again, there are external factors, so.
No, I understand. I understand, but the board needs to make a determination. Normally, you know, you've made your, your testimony with regard to what you've done, and, and, you know, and it's impressive, and I understand as an attorney that there are issues. But, Mr. Seiya, I think, and I'm going to sound in with Charlie and Jen, I think, if the board is inclined to grant it, again, it's a two-year rather than a one-year. I just wanted to clarify that, which is why I chimed in to begin with, because it's, you know, it is from 2017. So, if, if you were to grant a two-year extension, that would put this applicant, excuse me, to an extension through and to November 13th, 2021. If you were to go three years, it would be 2022, but you would have control over it with the, through, a two-year extension through 2021.
Yes, I, I, I understand, and I, I hear this. You know, the business that I'm in lends me some concern as well with regards to materials, vendors that go ahead and have to go ahead and now charge additional expenses and trying to navigate and mitigate the COVID. And it is, it is a little slow-going. And we just don't know how fast this economy is going to come back, where everyone can get back on their feet and, and get, get capitalism rolling again. So, you know, I'm not necessarily, I want the board members to know that, you know, I'm not necessarily against three ones, which puts this from this point on to 2022.
I do just want to, I did, I do just want to add that, and it's totally up to you, and I don't really have a major stake in it one way or the other, but I just want to be very clear. And I know that COVID has stopped a number of things, but construction is not one of them. Construction has been going not like since this entire thing started. So, you know, asphalt, concrete, those materials have been readily available the entirety of this, of the pandemic. So, I don't agree that, you know, there hasn't been the availability of materials. That's false, because every, every construction project that my office has been working on has moved forward without even the slightest deviation through this entire pandemic. So, I, you know, I think two, I think three years is a lot. So, I mean, I would leave it to you guys. You can do whatever you want, but, you know, this is not a circumstance where materials were not available. They're available, and they've continued to be available.
I'll say one thing with respect to what Jen is saying, Mr. Seiya, Mr. Chair. If you grant two years, the board has control. If you grant three years, you have no control.
Correct.
So, you know, I'm putting my lot in, I mean, with them in terms of, you know, again, it's your recommendation, whoever makes the motion, but with a two-year recommendation, the board retains control. I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chair.
And, and, and my point is, this is a burnt year, and if we give the two-year, we only have one year for this to be remediated for them.
It's pavement. They, it's a year to, to pave. We're not talking like they have to, you know, reconstruct massive amounts of stuff.
Can, can I clarify? The, the, the materials that my client was saying weren't available were materials to his company. It wasn't asphalt, it wasn't concrete. It's the impact on the availability of materials to the economic impact.
What materials? What materials?
Pavers.
Hardscape materials.
Landscape materials.
Not for nothing.
Well, actually, I, I have clients that have gone all the way to Massachusetts to get pressure-treated lumber.
I, I understand, but I will tell you that you've had two-plus years, almost three years, and COVID started in March. Your approval was in 2017. So, while I understand that COVID is an issue, it's been an issue for seven months. You've had approval since 2017, so.
And, and he was making the site improvements during that period of time.
I get it, but.
And he was paying for those.
I, I just.
We didn't have engineering completed up until maybe two months ago. We had approval done in November of 2017. That's the end of the year. So, then you have November, December, January, February, which is winter. We started our improvements in the spring of that.
2018, 2018, we're in 2020, keep going.
Continued to 2019.
Whatever.
And the third last phase, which was a $50,000, $60,000 project. I mean, I'm 30 years old on a 10-acre property, and this is my landscape company that I just started a few years ago. I don't.
I get it. I'm just telling you that, like, we're being told in every instance that COVID is the problem, whereas COVID is a seven-month issue.
It's a problem economics of my company.
I understand that, but your approval was from 2017. I don't think three years is necessary. I think two years, giving you an entire 12 months to do what you need to do, I think is more than generous.
And I.
But I think I agree with Ron. Three years, we say three years, and then we have absolutely no control after that, and you can, you know, do what you need to do, whatever. But I, I have to say that I have heard every single excuse under the sun about COVID, yes, no, whatever. At the end of the day, you were approved two-plus years before COVID even was a figment of anyone's imagination. So, like, enough. I think, I think two years is more than generous. I think three years is exorbitant, and that's my opinion, and the board can do whatever they want. But aside from that, it is what it is.
So, John, just to, John, to clarify, would you make your recommendation into your client for a two-year extension? I think you've heard everything that we could possibly put on the record there.
Yeah, Justin, it's up to you, but the, the two-year with the one coming back is probably best in everybody's best interest.
Uh, yeah, I, again, I'm just looking at it at, you know, it's November, and we're going to go through the winter, and is, are things going to be back to normal next spring? Probably not. We hope so. So, yeah.
We, we don't have a crystal ball, but this way, it makes the board comfortable with the decision and.
Of course, I want.
You know, and then we could, you know, cross that bridge when we come to it.
Okay. Mr. Chair, so there it is. I'd like to hear from. Okay. Mr. Chair, so there it is. I'd like to hear from
a couple of the board members. Anybody that would like to chime in?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mertens. Justin, I'm in the landscaping business too, and I'm, I get it. I understand that this year has been rough for us. But the company that I work with has still been doing, getting material with no problem. And the thing with our planner was saying, 2017 through 2019 was the two years. If this was 2018, I would say no problem. 2022. But I think on the recommendations of our professionals, I don't see why it's not an issue to come back next year. If we have a bad year with COVID continuing, then you can come back. And we can listen and we'll be, you know, we'll be understanding. But right now, you had the two years, which would have been to 2019.
Matt? Matt, Matthew's?
Uh, no, no, I actually was thinking that, but we already clarified. I was getting the timeline in my head. The 2017 to 2019 was the two years, and I have it all clear in my head, so I'm I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Matthew Gonzalez.
I don't have any questions right now, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
Got it. Mr. Kanter.
Mr. Chairman, question first. Was the original application for the improvements as a result of violations or something that the township pointed out, or was it the result of the the applicant wanting to improve his property and putting in the the variance request?
Mr. Rensler?
I can confirm that there were violations on the property. This was not a permitted use. Obviously, they needed to use variance. Three years ago, I actually forget if it was a complaint, but the township did get involved to to force the use variance application. So obviously, I've been listening to everything. The idea is we want to get this finalized without perfecting the approval. This is still not technically a legal business, so I've I've listened to the conversation, and the sooner the better for the township's sake as well.
Thank you for the clarification. That was that was my concern.
Yes. Mr. Moretti?
No questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask Mr. Rensler one quick question? So I I think Mr. Saul alluded to the farm land buffer easement and the right-of-way dedication, so I think Mr. Tropoli and myself approved it from the board's perspective. Has that been filed with the county and?
Yeah, those the those deeds, both deeds were recorded, and they were sent into the town. I emailed them in.
Okay.
After, right after your letter came out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So. Mr. Rensler, do you have any other closing remarks?
I just thank you for your patience on this and your your wisdom and move on. Hopefully, it'll be good for my client.
Eileen, we're not opening this up to public, are we?
No, there's no need.
No need.
Got it. Okay, so then, what's the pleasure of the board?
Like to make a motion that we grant the applicant a two-year extension as explained by our professionals, as recommended by our professionals, sorry.
Mr. Cantor has a motion on the table for a two-year extension. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair, Matt Hughes.
Mr. Hughes, second it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to bring back Chairman Nansen. Welcome back, Wendell.
You brought back Santa Claus.
I'm muting.
Wendell, you're muted.
Okay.
There we go.
I think I'm back.
Yep.
You are. I'm gonna have to switch over here for one second, back to this. Okay. Next case on the agenda is case number BA 1818. New Singular Wireless PCS Selco Partnership DBA is Verizon Wireless. Extension of time, application of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC in Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless is applicant in TNT Realty LLC is owner seeking extension of the use variance, bulk variance, preliminary and final major site plan approval granted by the board in resolution memorialized on November 5th, 2018 on premises known as block 42, lot 22 Oakland Road.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christopher Quinn. I'm here in behalf of the applicant New Singularity Wireless. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So again, I'm here in behalf of New Singularity Wireless, also Selco Partnership Verizon is a co-applicant here. We are seeking a one-year, only one-year extension for an approval that was granted in 2018. It was by resolution 18-25 from November 5th, 2018. It was for a telecommunications facility, but it it's an existing FirstEnergy JCPN L transmission tower that's currently there. What was required is because of the existing Verizon installation on there, in order for this tower to accommodate AT&amp;T, they had to replace the pole completely and have AT&amp;T go on the new tower as well as have Verizon be moved to the new tower as well. So we are seeking extension for one year. At this point, the carriers had their permits in place. They went through zoning compliance. They've had their permits since, I believe, March of 2019. The issue has been not as much COVID as much as is the utility company. We are at FirstEnergy and JCPNL's mercy here. Specifically, they need to turn off and have a power outage along this row of utility towers and redirect power as part of our installation. So they have very strict limitations when they do this. First, first of all, they won't ever do it in the summertime, because summertime means people are using air conditioners. They won't do it in the wintertime because people use it for heat and because the additional drains for that. So it's typically done in spring or fall. And in this particular corridor, they advise is that there's numbers of different projects at the same point. There's two circuits that are actually on this tower, so it's just a more complicated and tricky for scheduling purposes. We were actually supposed to have an outage in next month, but they just push us back off until March as well. So we are proposing, and the schedule we have at this point, which we've been working with the utility company on, and again, it was delayed by COVID, but wasn't delayed, you know, the main issue is really the utility company. You know, they were reluctant to have an outage during the quarantine, but at this point, we're just trying to get an outage scheduled. But at this point, they're telling us that we will have an outage in March 2021. So we're proposing to start our construction in the end of December. Our prep work for December to January, and then have the changeover of the tower in March of 2021. The new tower would be constructed, and then shortly thereafter, the old tower would be taken down.
Real quick, do you already, do y'all already have your materials ready to go?
I'm not sure if the materials are there at this point, but everything's been really been on hold for the utility company telling us to proceed.
Okay.
A lot of times, the utility company has everything stockpiled. For AT&amp;T, at the installation itself, it's a, you know, they have their their materials that can be ordered relatively quickly.
So they technically, if they say tomorrow that they're gonna act, you know, mobilize on it, you know, there there's no waiting. You know, they mobilize and it's done, correct?
Yes, except they they're going the opposite direction, where they're instead of, they were supposed to be end of October, early November, and now they're telling us March.
Okay. But y'all are at the mercy of the of the power company, correct?
Yes, and again, it's for the benefit of the whole community, because I don't think anyone wants to lose their power when they need their heat on or when they need their air conditioning on. So so that's really what it boils down to.
Okay. Charlie?
So our office issued a letter of compliance in February 2019. They had addressed everything from a a planning revision standpoint. We just had noted that they had to get all outside agency approvals, you know, letter of notice from the planning board, an updated LOI. Can you provide some testimony on where you are with all the township and outside agency approvals, Mr. Quinn?
Yes, it's my understanding, I confirmed with our tower company, the Diamond Communications, who has a relationship, they're the agent for FirstEnergy, but they've obtained everything and they've provided everything to the town, so everything is on file, and the permits were issued. It's literally was, has been waiting to go, and just on the nod from the utility company to to coordinate that tower in, uh, pretty soon.
So what I would say, Mr. Chair, is I have no issue with the granting of the extension. You know, obviously, it sounds like they're, you know, held up by the JCPN L. I just reiterate that the applicant obviously has to make sure they have all outside outside agency approvals, you know, prior to commencing construction, and you know, the engineering department and the building department will, you know, obviously make sure that all that stuff is in order before any any construction commences.
Sure. I mean, I think the only thing outstanding is possibly the pre-construction meeting. But I mean, otherwise, everything else is ready to go.
Jennifer?
I have no issue with the granting of the one-year extension request.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sayah, we'll start with you. Any questions or comments?
I have no comments, no questions, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes?
Me neither, sir. I have no questions or comments.
Mr. Mertens?
No comments, no questions.
Mr. Kanter?
Nope, no comments.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No comments, no questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moretti?
No questions or comments.
Okay. Seeing that having none. Mr. Tropoli, you have any input here?
No, it's a one-year extension. It seems like they have in, quite frankly, a practical hardship, and it's appropriate. And you're entitled to an extension of time. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, this is Matt Hughes. I'd like to make a motion to approve this extension of time.
Motion by Mr. Hughes. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Moretti.
Mr. Moretti on the second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Kanter?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Okay, do we want to take a little break here before we move into the to Starbucks, or we want to go ahead and?
Check with Matt first.
I'd like to take a five-minute break, sir, please.
Okay. Zoning Board's gonna take a five-minute recess here.
Thank you.
The board will take a five-minute recess. They'll be back at 7:55. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Listen, okay, there's Mr. Hughes. Okay, got everybody. Okay. Next case on the agenda, BA 20114 Starbucks Coffee Company. Bulk variance for two additional wall facade signs. Application of Starbucks Coffee Company and application to AEM Mills LLC is owner seeking a bulk variance approval to construct two 60-inch diameter wall facade type signs. One on the eastern facade and one on the western facade on recently constructed Starbucks on premises now is block 25 lot 5407 5331 US Highway 9 North. Expiration date, December 19th, 2020. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Henry Kent Smith. I'm with the firm of Fox Rothschild. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant Starbucks Coffee Company.
Yes.
We are seeking two bulk variances for two additional facade signs on the existing Starbucks, which is on a pad located out on the Route 9 frontage of the shopping center that has the BJ's and the movie theater off more off of Lanes Mill Road, just so that everybody's oriented. And that is the proposal.
How many witnesses do you have, sir?
Two witnesses, Benjamin Horton, who is our project architect, and Allison Coffin, who is our planner, and my client Andrew Kaufman is also here.
Okay, let's get them all sworn in real quick, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Mr. Tropoli?
Sure. Would the witnesses please raise the right hands? You swear the testimony you'll give this evening be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so offer your God.
I do.
Okay, sir, starting with you, Mr. Horton, your name, please?
My name is Benjamin Horton. H-O-R-T-N.
Thank you. And Mr. Kaufman?
Andrew Kaufman, C-O-F-F-M-A-N.
Thank you. Allison?
Unmute, Allison.
Yeah.
There we go. Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N.
Okay, the witnesses are all sworn.
Okay, sir, Mr. Smith, you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Horton, if you would, please describe to the board the proposed signs. And Mr. Robano, maybe we could post the architectural plans. I think you had those identified as A6, the architectural plans.
Yes. One second.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
In the meantime, Mr. Chairman, I'll just get Mr. Horton qualified. Mr. Horton, could you provide the board with your experience, education, professional licenses in the field of architecture?
Absolutely. My name is Ben Horton with Ben Horton Architecture and Design. My office is located at 312 State Route 10 in Land O'Quinn, Jersey. I received my Bachelor of Fine Arts degree at Carnegie Mellon University. My Master of Architecture.
Ben, you're breaking up a little bit. Can you see if you are breaking up a little bit?
Okay, the.
That's better.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I have to lean closer to the the mic on this. I received my, I received my Bachelor of Fine Arts degree at Carnegie Mellon University. I received my Master of Architecture degree at Yale University. I'm licensed in Jersey. Still can't hear me?
Yes, keep going.
Still breaking up.
Is is there a call-in number? Because usually Zoom meetings have a call-in.
I think, no, I think you're fine. You just have to speak up and get a little closer to the microphone, Ben.
Okay.
Yeah, don't be shy.
I bet. All right, so I received my Master of Architecture at Yale University. I am licensed in New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, Pennsylvania, and many, many other states throughout the country. I've testified in many other townships throughout New Jersey. How township does this apply first?
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Horton, then, if you could, you prepared the architectural plans that were presented to the board tonight for the proposed signage for the Starbucks, correct?
That's correct.
And Ms. Robano has put up the exhibit. Just identify that for the record.
That that is the floor plan shown, it's a partial site plan showing the orientation of the building. In relationship to the plan, the top of the plan, that's the north side. Right is the east, bottom is the south, and left is the west. The orientation-wise, left is the left side of the plan, that's the side that faces Route 9. If you're all familiar with the the general sort of location, so I think for orientation purposes, it's good to note that the top of the plan and the bottom of the plan, the north and the south side, that's where the existing signs are located. The short side, the side facing west, which is the side facing Route 9, and then the right side, which is the east side facing the BJ's, if you guys are familiar with the property, BJ Shopping Center is located to the east side of it. So you could kind of see the main access road there, north. uh, BJ Shopping Center is located to the east side of it, so you could kind of see the main access road there, uh, north of the plan there. Uh, if you were to follow that main access road all the way to the right, uh, there is, uh, the BJ and obviously Route nine, you're familiar with that. So, the two short side of the building is where we're proposing to add the, the new sign. Uh, so if you could flip to the next page, please?
Next page.
There we go.
So, so you can see, uh, here's the east side elevation on the top, which is the short end of the building. Uh, you see the circle, uh, that circle is, I'm sure you're familiar with the, uh, the siren logo, which is the green Starbucks logo. Yep, there you go. Uh, we're adding that on the, the, uh, that short east, uh, and west side. That side that you're looking at is the, uh, the east side, which is the side that faces the, uh, BJ, uh, building. And you can see that's one of the main entry doors. There's a main entry door facing the north side. Then this, uh, short end, east side, there's an entry door there as well. You see, there's some outdoor patio. The, uh, if you could go, uh, scroll down to the, uh, other element. That's the, uh, the long side, or what we're calling, uh, the, I believe that's the north side of the building. Yes. The north side of the building, that's the side, uh, that faces the main access road, and that's kind of, you know, the main entry. I think originally when this application was made, uh, you know, they figured, let's put this main, that sign, uh, at the main entry, which is the north side. And on the south side, uh, if you could scroll to the next page. Yeah, it, on the next page, that detail is the, uh, the west side, which is the short end of the building facing the Route nine. There's currently nothing there. We're also proposing to put that, uh, logo, the round logo, that short side. If you could scroll down to the long, that's the south side, which is the side facing, uh, the drive-in, uh, window. And I think originally, uh, the applicant contemplated putting, since we're allowed two signs, put one in the main front entry, uh, which kind of makes sense, that's the front door, and then put it on the south side, which is the side facing the drive-through. And, and I think in, uh, as the building went up and we contemplated this project a little bit more, it, it, I think the two short end of the, uh, building, because of the fact that we're in this corner lot with multiple sort of roadways around the building, it became really important, uh, to kind of put that logo on the, uh, two short ends, one, one side to face Route nine and one side to face, uh, BJ's, which, you know, uh, most of the, uh, traffic that comes from that shopping center towards, uh, our building or towards Route nine, that's the face that, so it was really important.
So, Mr. Horton, if I may, uh, just, uh, verify for the record, the sign area is sixty square feet?
The sign area is, uh, noted on the drawing.
Sixty inches in diameter, I apologize.
Yeah, it's sixty inches in diameter. Actual sign area is, uh, nineteen point three-six three square feet.
There's a reason I'm a lawyer, I can't do math. Go ahead.
And what that means is, uh, on those short ends, the short sides of the building, uh, that's approximately four point seven percent of the facade. Uh, you're allowed up to, uh, I believe twenty percent. I- in this area, we're allowed twenty-five percent, but, uh, we're only four point seven percent. So, it kind of gives you an idea that relative to the building facade, it's really not a big sign, and I think you can see it on the elevation. Now, if five feet, uh, seems like, uh, it's a decent size, but it's really just a round logo and it's only four point seven square feet.
And Ben, Ben, if I may, uh, just discuss briefly illumination. How is the sign illuminated?
The, uh, if anybody's been to the site during the evenings, I, I think you'll get a sense of what the time's like. Uh, it's an internally illuminated sign. It, it has two colors. It's green, uh, the background color is green, and the, the figure of the siren is the white. So, it's, uh, green and white. It, I think everybody's very familiar with, uh, Starbucks logo these days, I think.
Um, I have- I have no further questions for Mr. Horton.
Uh, I have a question for Mr. Tropoli. Ron?
Yes, Wendell.
Okay, I, I've been on the board for a while. Uh, was this a planning board case or zoning board? I don't remember seeing this.
This one-
Mr. Chair, can I clarify? Ron, I think I can clarify pretty quickly for the chair. So, this was a zoning board case. It originally came in as the Tropicana Center. It, uh, I think the ownership might have changed, and then it came back to the board as the Green Leaf under AA Mill. Uh, there was other applications. It had a technical subdivision for funding purposes and things like that. Uh, site that we're looking at is the southwest corner of the property. It's building pad E. Um, it was a blanket pad site approved for a, you know, fast food type of use on the property. Um, they came in under an administrative approval to reconfigure that specific for Starbucks. Um, it was a reduction in the size of the building, and they, you know, pretty much modified the pad site to fit Starbucks typical layout. Um, it was, it was granted administrative approval under that. Subsequent to that, I believe they've, um, gotten a, uh, a permit from, uh, Matt Howard for two signs on the building. Those are the ones that exist on the north and the south side. What they're here before the board is to add two additional signs, the same exact dimension and footprints and configuration, uh, that already exist on the north and the south, just on the east and the west side. Um, and, and that's what they're here for. You're only allowed to have two signs for a freestanding building in the HD one zone. They're asking for two additional for a, a total of four. And then I just want to clarify for the board. Um, coming from the south, there is a pretty substantial wetlands, buffer, um, and vegetated area, so it's not really that, that existing sign on the south isn't a hundred percent visible as you're coming Route nine north. So, even though they have two existing signs, you know, one can make the argument that there's actually only one existing sign that's really visible on the north side of the building. Now we're adding two, one on the west and one on the east to make it more visible from Route nine and the internal driveways, um, from the BJ's, uh, internal to the site. Um, that's really what they're here for, the board. Um, just the bulk variance for these two additional signs were, uh, you know, a maximum of or two permitted in the zone.
Okay. Now, I, I just wanted to clarify that because I, you know, I, I remember AA Mills, I, all of the movie theater, Texas Roadhouse, all of that, you know, I remember that, but we, we never, as a board, we never saw the Starbucks itself, so.
That's correct.
Clarify that. Okay. You might continue, sir.
Uh, my next witness is Allison Coffin. Uh, Allison, you've testified before this board numerous occasions, correct?
Yes, and I, I still have my professional planner's license from the state.
They haven't taken away from you yet?
Nope, not yet. Haven't torn it up either.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm submitting Ms. Kaufman as a professional planner on behalf of the bulk variance relief being sought.
Okay, just real quick, just your education background, just each case is on their own.
Yep, I have a bachelor's degree from Boston College. I have a professional's planner's license from the state of New Jersey and, and certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've had those for about seventeen years now. I have appeared in front of more.
I could have told, I could have put those on for you, so. But, yes, we accept your credentials.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Coffin, did you request the applicant, did you review the application before the board tonight from a professional planning perspective for the purpose of rendering an opinion as to the appropriateness of the bulk variance relief being sought?
Yes.
And if you could then just describe the context of the building and the zoning and the relief being requested?
Sure. The applicant's proposing to install signage on a Starbucks pad site within a shopping center that is currently under development. The building is proposed to have four attached logo signs, one on each facade. The lot in question is being developed as a multi-tenanted commercial center. The commercial site is accessed from Route nine and Lanes Mill Road. The Starbucks is located on a pad site adjacent to the Route nine entrance. And the proposed attached signs require variance relief for the number of signs. The ordinance permits two signs per structure for commu- commercial uses along Route nine, and the applicant is proposing one on each facade, which is a total of four. The type of variance relief that the applicant is requesting is C variances, and there are two tests for this type of variance within the municipal land use law. The first is commonly known as a hardship variance, which is not applicable in this application. The second standard is known as the flexible C variance, and is justified when the purposes of the land use law are advanced by the deviation of the ordinance requirements, and the benefits of the deviation substantially outweigh any detriments. The proposed sign, signs advance the purposes of the municipal land use law. The primary purpose of the MLUL is to promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. The signs proposed advance this purpose of the municipal land use law by providing for clear identification for the use from Route nine as well as from within the larger commercial development. Um, I did provide an exhibit with photos. I don't know if Eileen can bring that up. It demonstrates the current views of the site both from Route nine and from certain locations within the development.
One second. And we need to mark that.
That would be under the exhibit list. Uh, it goes up through A nine, so I propose this is A ten.
Yes, and if she could just describe what it is?
So, A ten is a series of photographs surrounding an aerial photograph of the property showing views from within the subject site and from along Route nine of this Starbucks building. The photos that are labeled one and two show the western side of the building. Uh, photo one is taken from across Route nine in the southbound lanes, and photo two is from the northbound lanes right at the site entrance. It shows you the, the walls that currently exists, and that you cannot identify the building at that location. Uh, photograph three is taken from deeper within the site, close to but not quite at the gas station. And four and five show views of the Starbucks building from a main intersection within the commercial development. They're taken on opposite sides of an intersection with stop signs, showing that the view of the Starbucks at that location does not show any identification of the building.
And you took these photographs?
Yes, I did.
And you assembled the exhibit that was before the board tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, actually, to be clear, I think my son may have taken two or three of these because I was driving.
Good to talk.
Yep. Uh, so, providing a clear identification for this use, this building within this larger property and from Route nine promotes public safety by allowing drivers of vehicles approaching the use, both from the roadway and from within the center, to more readily identify their destination. The proposed sign variance also advances the purposes of the municipal land use law with regard to promoting a more desirable visual environment. In this case, the signage proposed is attractive and appropriately scaled to the structure. The benefits of the variance outweigh the detriments. The primary benefit of the proposed signage application is promoting public safety through the adequate identification of this site and use. It's my opinion that there is no detriment to the public good caused by the proposed variances. Signs are passive structures which can have no impact regarding things such as traffic generation, noise, and odors. The only two potential detriments that could result from a sign variance would be aesthetic impact and safety, safe safety through the obstruction of driver sightlines. Looking first at aesthetics, the signage proposed is tasteful and well-scaled to the structure, and there's only one sign per facade proposed, so it is not possible to view more than two facades at a time. So, there's no point at which the presence of more than two signs or non-conforming condition would be visible from the public. So, from all angles that you view this structure, the signage would appear to be conforming. Uh, and looking at safety, the signs proposed on the facade will not cause any visual obstruction or distraction, so there's no detriment to safety. As there's significant benefit to the public safety and no detriment to the public good created by the signage variances, the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments. The last test for a variance is whether or not they would substantially impair the intent and purpose of your master plan and zoning ordinance. The, the proposed signage requires a variance from the number of signs. It is properly scaled to the building facade and its distance from the adjacent roadways. There is only one logo sign for each facade, ensuring that at no point will anyone be able to see more than two signs at once. And this avoids creating visual clutter or overpowering signs in terms of size. So, it's my opinion that there's no detriment to the master plan or zoning ordinance for this uniquely situated property to have a sign on all four sides.
Let me ask one, uh, question with regard to Mr. Horton's testimony. You're, uh, aware that the sign area is a little under twenty square feet, therefore, uh, what's your opinion relative to the impact of the sign on the facade and, and the overall amount of signage for the building?
I think, I think that the signage that's proposed is properly scaled to the building.
Thank you. So, with regard to any final words, Ms. Kaufman, on this matter?
Uh, for those reasons, it's my opinion that positive reasons exist for the granting of the variances. They can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and the granting of the variances would result in, uh, an improvement of the structure in a manner which is consistent with the intent of the master plan and the development ordinance.
I have no further questions.
Jennifer?
I don't take any exception to the testimony as provided. Typically, you know, me, I'm not one for sign clutter, but what they're doing is one modest sign on the facade, which I think will help with identification and traffic safety, so I agree with the testimony that Ms. Coffin has provided in terms of the positive and negative criteria, and I don't take any exception to the board actively on the application.
Charlie?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Seiya?
Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I frequently go to the BJ's, and when I saw this building go up, I had a hard time identifying it. So, I agree with all the testimony that's been put on the record that this is for public safety and, and welfare, uh, both from the Route nine perspective and from the shopping center perspective. Um, I was happy to see that it was operational, and it is a Starbucks when you get up close to it, but you can't tell that from, from a distance over. I have no further questions, sir.
Yes, Mr. Hughes?
I agree with everything Mr. Seiya said. I think it's, uh, I think it's, I have no questions. I'm good.
Mr. Martin?
Dito, no questions or comments.
Mr. Cantor?
This is a great addition to our community, and the signs only add to the appeal and attraction of the building, so I, I'm, no, no questions.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions.
Mr. Moretti?
I agree with Mr. Share. I'm a frequent, uh, visitor of BJ's and I came down that road one day. I said, what's this building? I had no idea what it was until I came up right in front of it and saw Starbucks. So, uh, that's, I, I, I have no problem with it.
Yeah. At this time, I'll take a motion to open the public.
Make a motion, open the public?
Motion by Mr. Seiya?
Second that.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing on, Eileen, at this time, we'll open the public for comments and questions.
Okay, one moment. The hearing is now open to the public for questions or comments on the Starbucks application. If anyone has any questions or comments, please raise your hand, and we will move you into the meeting. Mr. Chair, we have no one in attendance raising their hand.
Okay.
Make a motion to close, to public?
Motion by Mr. Seiya?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Jen, do you have any final comment or question?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Charlie?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Anything in front of board members? Okay, Mr. Smith, you like to have a summation?
I just appreciate the board's time and effort in these times, and, uh, I believe that the testimony we presented, uh, warrants the grant of the requested variance relief and had nothing further to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, what is a pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Seiya.
Hmm, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two additional signs, AKA badging of the building for public safety and welfare, and for the good use of the citizens of not only how township, but anyone passing through, sir.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Sayah.
I'd like to second that, Mr. Chair, please.
Got a second by Mr. Hughes. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, greatly appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. Eileen, we're going to take another five real quick while Mr. Pape gets his witnesses up.
Okay.
Okay.
The board will take a five-minute recess. We'll be back at 8:27. The zoning board will reconvene in a minute. Now, who you have there? Peter Strong. He probably needs all three, though. Because one is the architect, one's the engineer, and I don't know who the other.
Want to call us back, Eileen?
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Charlie, you there?
I don't think he is.
Yeah, sorry, I have my camera turned off.
That's okay. Matt Hughes?
Matt is not back yet.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just having a problem with my camera.
Oh, okay. Okay, we'll now reconvene. Okay. Case number BA19176520LLC. Application type is a use variance preliminary major site plan. Application of 6520 LLC is applicant owner seeking a use variance preliminary major site plan with accessory bulk variance approval to remove the prior condition restricting the use of 15,364 square feet retail building to solely a furniture store in utilizing existing 6,227 square feet warehouse building as a multi-tenant warehouse space. 2,813.5 square foot per tenant with associate office space of 300 square foot per tenant. Increase the existing parking from 23 to 77 spaces in stormwater management system with an infiltration basin in the rear of the property to the west of the parking area on premises known as Block 71, Lot 15, 6520 US Highway 9 South. This application was originally scheduled for August 24, 2020, when it was carried to October 19, 2020 with no further notice. Expiration date, November 21, 2020. Welcome. Mr. Pape?
Yes, good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, good evening all. Mrs. Robano, if you could confirm that Peter Strong, Jay Troutman, who is Scott Kennel's partner, Allison Coffin, and Steve Radosti are admitted?
They are all admitted to the hearing.
Thank you.
They all unmute and give access to their video. They'll be fine.
Okay, so Peter, Jay, Steve, if you would go into your cameras and turn microphones. And with that, Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. This evening, I have the responsibility and the privilege of representing your applicant 6520LLC. This is an application for use variance relief. There's two D2 variances that we'll ask you for, and a preliminary site plan with bulk variance relief. If I may, before we begin the presentation, if either Ms. Robano or Mr. Tropoli could confirm receipt of our notices and that the board has jurisdiction to hear the application this evening?
Yes, we can, Mr. Pape, on both counts. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is an application that is for two existing buildings on the property. The property is Block 71, Lot 15. It's 3.8 acres in size, and it's located at 6520 Route 9. The two existing buildings exist as a result of approvals that were granted most recently in 1990. The front building is a little over 15,000 square feet. It is a retail building. The rear building is a little over 6,000 square feet, and it is a warehouse. And when those buildings were approved, warehouses were a permitted use in the zone. With the changes in the zone, the warehouse use is now a non-conforming use. When the approvals were granted, and they were granted over a series of presentations to the planning board, the applicant agreed voluntarily to impose a restriction. And the restriction was that the front building would only be for the sale of furniture. Our client purchased the building a few years ago, and when he purchased it, he did not know that that restriction existed. As he made application for tenants, he was granted certificates of occupancy for multiple tenants. And then there came a moment where it was realized that a restriction was in place. One of the reasons that the restriction was not known is that back in 1990, when the approval was granted, the applicant did not record the resolution, as is the usual requirement of this board. So when the next person purchased it, the restriction wasn't known. All that's history. Tonight, we're here to ask you for permission to use the front building, the existing front building, for a retail building without restriction other than those uses that are expressly permitted in the zone. And in order to justify that, we're going to identify improvements to the property, landscaping and lighting, but most important, a new parking lot that adequately addresses the parking requirements. And one of the big differences in this proposed plan is that never before was there a stormwater management system. The property was developed without a stormwater management system, and Mr. Strong will testify this evening that there is a complete stormwater management system in place. The second request is for the use of the warehouse building. The warehouse building is there. It was built with approvals. But as we come before you for relief, it is necessary for us to request a D2 variance to continue to use that building. And amongst the improvements that are made, and you'll see, is that, in response to comments from your board professionals, that the rear building was not as attractive as the front building. Our architect has come up with new elevations for three sides of that building that are handsome and are consistent with the warehouse, the retail building in the front. I apologize for the length of my introductory remarks, but I think those are the salient points that we're going to ask the board focus on as we make the presentation. The presentation will be made by four professionals. Peter Strong, who designed the plan, is our design engineer. And Jay Troutman is a professional engineer with McDonough and Ray, and he is presenting the traffic testimony. Steve Radosti is the architect who designed the rear building. Not the, the front building was recently renovated. It's in very nice shape. There's no architectural changes to the front building, just the back building. And lastly, Allison Coffin is our planner. And Mr. Tropoli, do you wish to swear in all the witnesses at this time?
I will. Witnesses, please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self of you God?
I do.
Yes, starting now with Ms. Coffin. May we have your name, please?
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N.
Thank you. Mr. Strong?
Peter Strong, S-T-R-O-N-G.
Thank you. Mr. Radosti?
Mr. Radosti, R-A-D-O-S-T-I.
And finally, Jay Troutman, please.
Jay Troutman, T-R-O-U-T-M-A-N.
Very well, all sworn, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pape, one by one, as they come forward for testimony, we'll have them qualify each one at that time.
Very fine, thank you.
Thank you.
I know that, let me pull up the, I know, Mrs. Robano, that the two exhibits that Mr. Strong will rely on in the early parts of his testimony are the A11 aerial display and A13, the site plan. And I believe it would be appropriate if A11 with a first screen share to be placed in front of the board. Mr. Peter Strong is the design engineer and will testify in that capacity. Mr. Strong, if you could take a few moments to share with this board your professional and educational background.
Well, he doesn't have time. Go ahead.
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science degree from what was then Newark College of Engineering, is now known as New Jersey Institute of Technology. I also have a master's degree from that same institution. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1975. I also have a license in the state of Florida, and I used to have one in Pennsylvania, but I let that lapse. And I've been the founder of Crest Engineering Associates in 1981, and I continue with that firm at this time.
Yes, sir. We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Strong testifies, I want to share something with you. Peter Strong and I met 40 years ago, and our 40th anniversary of working on applications together is this month. Peter and I have been working as a partnership for 40 years.
Wow.
Wow.
Impressive.
You could, beginning with the exhibit that is A11, if you could use that exhibit to bring us to the property, tell us where it is, what's around it, and what's on it.
Yes, the site, as you indicated before, is Lot 15 and Block 71, which is situated along the westerly side of Route 9, in between the Alexander Avenue and Estelle Lane Jug Handles. It's currently, it's just north of a motel. It's situated on the property to the south. And there are several other retail businesses to the east side of Route 9 that are currently in operation. The site consists of 3.8 acres, 6520 Route 9. The front building, if you will, is some 15,000 square feet. And the rear building, which is to the northwest of it, is a warehouse building, originally both built to house a furniture business that sold furniture retail and housed their own furniture inventory in the warehouse. To the rear, there's a wooded area. Along the rear property line, which is the westerly side of the property, there is, there are some wetlands, and the stormwater generally discharges in that direction. To the north is a small residential house at this point in time that has been there for quite some time. That's what the neighborhood looks like.
And Mr. Strong, I think it would be appropriate if we went now to the site plan.
Okay.
We could go to the site plan with a little more detail. So now we're bringing up, we're bringing up A13. Is there a rendered version of this in the portfolio of Mrs. Robano?
Colored landscape.
But I don't believe it's been marked yet. One second.
Okay.
Color landscape rendering. Right there.
Up to A17, yes?
One second. It's loading, so give me one minute.
It's a big file, so, yeah.
Yes.
Boy, have we all relearned patience, haven't we?
There you go.
If you forgot it, you. So, Peter, if I could, so this, if we could, this is the landscape plan page of your site plan package that's been enhanced with coloration, correct?
That is correct.
And those two buildings that are on there are the same buildings we saw in the aerial photograph just a moment ago.
They are.
They're not changing the size or the dimensions, location. There's nothing changing in those at all.
No, there's not. That's correct.
Excuse me, Mr. Pape, before we go any further, can we mark this then as A17?
I was just going to ask if we could mark this as A17, please.
I'll get over so I can see a date on the bottom. And it's dated 7/17/20 on that plan.
Correct.
Thank you.
And Mr. Strong, I'm going to ask if you could, in a moment, we'll go through some very specific elements of the site plan. But if you could just do a three-minute overall description of the site plan presentation to this board, and then we'll go through the actual elements, the grading drainage, landscaping, lighting, circulation, parking elements.
Okay, the, as you said, the two buildings that are shown in kind of an orange color are the existing buildings that we saw in the aerial map. Site access is from Route 9. The southerly driveway is the entrance driveway, and traffic circulates either through the front of the building, through the driveway in the parking area, and then back out. The northern driveway, which is the exit, or it circulates along the south side of the building and around in through the parking lot, and then back out again to the northerly driveway, which is the exit. We have added a number of parking spaces. Right now, there are 23 parking spaces on the site, and they're all in the front of the building. We've added a couple more spaces in the front, and we have added a number of spaces in the rear adjacent to the L-shaped retail building, as well as farther to the west, which is behind the warehouse building and in front of the stormwater detention basin, which is the greenish-colored area that's all the way to the west side of the building. There are loading areas for the warehouse on the west side of that warehouse building, which are designated by the long, thin rectangular striping areas that separate the spaces into the building. There's four loading bays, if you will, into that warehouse.
Mr. Strong, if I look at the top of the picture, the green area doesn't quite make it up to the highway. And I know that there's a relief that's requested because there isn't a full buffer. So is, I'm just going to make, the buffer exists everywhere that it was possible to have a buffer, but the area where the existing building was prevented that buffer to be continued up to the highways. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, you will see the, there's kind of a dappled green color that surrounds the southwest and northerly sides of the site. That is the existing wooded area that will be remaining in place upon completion of the site plan. There is a requirement that a 50-foot buffer be required along the entire boundary with an adjoining residential use. That is impossible to do in this location because of the existing buildings. Both buildings, as well as the northerly exit driveway, encroach into that 50-foot buffer already. We have supplemented landscaping where it's possible to do so, which is shown on the plan, along the northerly side of the north driveway, as well as the northerly side of the warehouse building, and continuing around the parking that's to the west of the warehouse building, so that we have. so that we have enhanced the buffer area as much as possible where it's able to do so, but we're not able to provide the full 50-foot buffer due to the existing conditions out there.
Just want to make a point and share with the board, the lack of buffer is not a part of a plan to overuse the property or intensify the use of the property. It's simply addressing existing conditions that we have before we begin the application.
That's correct.
Peter, let's, let's go through basic site plan elements. In order for this site to be developed as proposed, is there any significant regrading of the property?
The area that's, I'll say from the, from the warehouse building to the east is not being significantly graded. The area to the west of that, there is some regrading being done to raise the elevations so that we can create a stormwater detention basin and properly drain the parking lot to that basin before it is discharged to the wetlands, to the, to the far west.
Mr. Strong, Mr. Pate, now approximately how much fill would be brought in for this, Mr. Strong?
Well, it varies from, I think at its worst case, which is all the way on the, the westerly end of the stormwater detention basin, it is approximately four feet. So it varies from zero on the, on the, in the back of the warehouse building to four feet at the westerly side of the detention basin.
Okay.
An average of two feet.
Okay, an average of two feet.
Yep.
Of fill that's going to have to be brought in, not, it's not a cut and balance, correct?
No, it's not a cut and balance.
Okay.
Okay.
If we could, the script, we've lost our, our visual, we can put the visual back up. Thank you. And Peter, let's talk about storm water management. Accurate statement that the site, as we see it today, as it exists today, does not have a stormwater management system.
No, it does not.
And the stormwater management system, there is a stormwater management system as part of the application submitted. Would you share with the board, does that stormwater management system now meet the requirements of the DEP and the township for stormwater management?
Yes, the, the site, all the new areas that are being regraded, as well as some of the existing areas, are being collected in underground stormwater drains and taken to the detention basin, which is in the westerly portion of the rear of the site. That basin is designed to handle the water quantity, to reduce it to the 50, 75, and 80% of the the 210 and 100-year storms, as well as provide water quality enhancement and groundwater recharge, all within that basin. There's a sand bottom infiltration basin is the, the type of system that we're using in this particular case. But it all meets the state DEP, as well as the Hallow Township regulations.
And Peter, that's a private system, that's privately owned.
Yeah, we privately owned and maintained.
No burden on the town?
No.
And the waters currently leaving the site, traveling towards the rear, are leaving the, leaving the site untreated and going into the wetlands?
That's correct.
This will stop that completely, collect the water, put it through the cleansing process before releasing it?
Yes.
So grading and drainage, let's talk about circulation. Currently, the driveway system is in place, but there are enhancements that you've built in. And Mr. Troutman will deal with that a little bit later, but if you could just point out the, the circulation pattern and confirm that working with McDonough and Ray, that the anticipated truck movements, which are WB40s or smaller, can be safely accommodated throughout the site, just take us through the safety.
Yeah, that's correct, the, again, the, the entrance from Route 9 is to, through the southerly driveway that will continue. The traffic will, for the most part, continue along the southern edge of the existing building to the rear of the parking spaces that we've added at the westerly end of the existing retail building. And then the, the truck traffic will either circulate back between the two buildings, where we have a a loading area for the retail building itself, before it goes to the north and then out through the northerly exit driveway. Or, in the case of the warehouse, the, the trucks would go into the area behind the warehouse building and then pull in either face in or back into the, the overhead doors that would be constructed in the rear of the warehouse building.
All those, you've worked with McDonough and Ray and with the turning templates for those vehicles, and can you comfortably confirm to the board that all of those movements have been designed into the system?
Yes, I can, we've, we've verified that WB40 trucks, as well as the fire trucks, can easily circulate through the site.
And Mr. Chair, members of the board, as we, as we often do, we met with Chief Lewis and went over this entire site with him, and his comment letters are part of the file, although he indicates that the driveway, the pre-existing driveways on the side of the building are narrower than he often requests the driveway system to be adequate and safe from a firefighting position. We're pleased to secure those letters. Mr. Strong, if we could talk about landscaping and lighting?
Mr. Pate, before we move on to that, I, I can't really see this drawing that clear, but where is the garbage collection areas?
The, the trash and recycling collection is all the way to, in the, along the southern border of the site in front of the detention basin, so as you come in the, yeah, right in there, as you come in the driveway from, along the south edge of the building, the trucks would come and empty the dumpsters in the trash enclosure in, in that location, and then circulate back out between the two buildings and through the northerly driveway and out.
Now, is that a masonry enclosure?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't see it depicted on the plans.
Yeah, I, I don't see it either.
Yeah, it's that gray rectangle over there in the corner. Is there any way blowing that up? Can we, is that, can you zoom while you're zooming?
Yeah, I don't see it there.
Yeah, me either, I mean, I guess is that area right there between like the island and the, and the truck?
Yes.
Right, it's not very clear.
It's, um.
It is a masonry enclosure, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I think we might need a clarification on that.
I mean.
There is a detail on the plans.
Regardless, at the end of the day, so, yeah, it will be masonry.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there is a construction detail provided on Sheet 11 of the plans.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what it was.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make a couple comments, there was a lot of testimony on stormwater management and circulation and things like that, so there was an extensive back and forth between Mr. Strong's office and myself. I'm comfortable with the stormwater management at this point, from the board's perspective. I just want to note for the applicant, you know, should the board real favorably, obviously, I think Mr. Strong is probably aware that the stormwater regs are changing in March 2021, you, you, there are some outside agency approvals as far as with the wetlands, with the general permit for the outfall and things like that. DEP's clock for reviewing and completeness is based on their application, so, you know, should the board real favorably, it's more advantageous for the applicant to, you know, submit for any outside agency approval as quickly as possible, so you're not having to come back to the, you know, board with any site plan changes should DEP, you know, review it with the new stormwater regulations.
Yeah.
Correct, I understand that.
I was going to say, Mr. Conley, well stated, it is our understanding. I'm going to take just a small break here to tell you that as we are approaching the board this evening, we have been working on all the other approvals and permits pretty diligently. Peter has filed with the county, and the county has issued a letter stating no conditions, and Freehold Soil has approved the certification letter. Mr. McDonough and Ray are making the application for the, it's either a, a count letter or a letter of no interest, but our, there's no construction on our driveways, and that's been confirmed. Wetlands were previously approved and now need to be reaffirmed, and our client is handling that through his environmental consultant. The purpose, that was twofold, one, Mr. Conley is correct, it's important to move with alacrity. And two, I wanted the board to know that our client has been working very diligently on all those agencies before coming before them.
And then, kind of, with the circulation, I apologize, is the trains coming through my farm of conflict here. But, so there's a couple of variances or waivers required for the circulation aisle lists. Obviously, two of them are existing, the driveway on the north and the south side of the building, which is matching what's existing out there. And then obviously, the main circulation through the site, you know, doesn't have the 30-foot, that's typically required by ordinance. As Mr. Pate pointed out, obviously, they met with Chief Lewis, and he gave a blessing. The one though he did have was that fire lanes would have to be adopted and striped and everything like that, so I take no issue with granting of that relief as long as, you know, that's complied with. My big question for the applicant, Mr. Strong hasn't gotten there yet, is, is parking for the site, I think they're, they're requiring a variance for parking, they're proposing 77, where 107 are proposed.
Yep.
Is Peter going to touch on that, or is that going to be for your traffic professional?
Mr. Conley, the first thing I planned on doing is having Peter identify those elements on the plan.
Okay.
He'll testify, he'll testify to the adequacy of the parking.
Okay.
Okay. May we proceed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Strong, so if you could just identify the number of parking stalls that are shown on this plan?
There are 77 parking stalls shown on this plan.
And what is the, the design of the parking stalls?
What is a design?
Dimension.
Jeez. Hang on a sec. They're in general nine, nine by 18 feet.
Thank you.
Some, some are nine by 19 feet, the ones in the front especially.
Thank you.
But Ken, just so you're, and I, and I don't take exception to it, but the 18-foot length of the parking stall requires a waiver, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I, I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure that that's clear on the record.
Thank you. So 77 parking stalls where 107 are required by ordinance?
Yes.
And you've got stalls that are 18 feet in length, nine by 18, and that requires a design waiver?
Yes.
I'd like to move on to the description of the landscaping. The, if you could describe where landscaping has been incorporated into the plan, confirm that there is no landscaping currently. And then if we could also talk about the lighting plan that you've created for this, this area?
Yes, we have, we have provided landscaping in the front of the site where there currently really isn't any. Couple of shade trees, as well as a, a line of shrubbery along the front of the parking spaces that are facing the Route 9 frontage. We've added some shrubbery to the islands on the north and south ends of the building in the front. And we've landscaped the, several islands that are in the rear of the site, both behind the retail building at the, the turnaround at the end of the angled spaces west of the retail building, and in the island to the southwest corner of the warehouse building. In addition, we've added significant landscaping along the northerly side of the north driveway, as well as the north side of the warehouse building, and continue that all the way around past the parking areas and onto the area just north of the detention basin. There are other, other landscaping that is in the wetland area around the the discharge point from the detention basin, and then back around to the south property line, where we've added shade and evergreen trees along the, the line with our neighbor, the motel. There are also evergreen trees that are shielding the dumpster, the dumpster enclosure area that we talked about before, as well as a line of trees and shrubs in between the detention basin and the parking spaces that are facing west on the west side of the parking lot. So there's a, it's a significant area, amount of landscaping that we've added to this site that currently does not exist.
Mr. Strong, Shari Spiro, the board's arborist and consultant with regard to landscaping, has issued a report recently, as October 19th recently. And that report is the second report that was issued by Ms. Spiro. I trust that the recommendations that appear in that are acceptable to your office revisions to the primarily additions to materials, and there's also a notation that there is a shade tree contribution required. Comfortable advising the board that your office will work with Ms. Spiro to satisfy the outstanding issues identified in that report?
Yeah, we have, we don't have any problems with the recommendations of, of Ms. Spiro. The only, I guess we need to point out, her first recommendation, if you will, involves the four-season buffer that is supposed to be along the northerly property line. And as I talked about before, we don't have the ability to, to put, put in a four-season buffer along a significant portion of, of the area where the northerly driveway and the warehouse building are. We have supplemented the landscaping in that area wherever possible, as can be seen from the, from the landscaping plan. But the technicality of the ordinance is that we're supposed to be providing a six-foot high berm along with a 10-foot fence and landscaping on top of the berm. I'm assuming that Ms. Spiro's recommendations do not include bulldozing the trees that are existing in that 50-foot buffer in order to provide a a six-foot berm and a 10-foot fence in that area, and that leaving the existing vegetation in its place is acceptable.
Shari, you're, I know you're here somewhere, but I want to jump in here.
Shari?
Yeah, um, yes, you're correct, I'm just quoting the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, really only the comment I had on the side there, or on the north end, was, you know, if we could just put into field locate just to make sure we're not putting the tree directly under some other tree, so, you know.
Yeah.
Yes, that's fine.
We have no problem with that, and I understand that you wanted me to point out to the board that we're not, we're not conforming, and, and exactly how we're not conforming, which I think I've just done, but I just wanted to clarify that we're not taking any vegetation down to, to implement the technicalities of the ordinance.
And Mr. Chair and Board members, the, the buffer, the four-season buffer, is a buffer between commercial and residential. So it's, it's worth pointing out that there is a residence next to us, and that residence is, is out of zone. It's also worth pointing out that when we've gone over to explore it, we're not sure if it's occupied, we don't know. So we have a residence in a commercial zone that we're creating a 50-foot buffer for. And I wanted, Peter pointed out to me some time ago that although as we get closer to the highway, we lose the buffer. In the location where the house is to the south of us, in the location where the house is, we do have the, the, the buffer, but the front yard of the house is the portion that is not buffered. And Peter, if you could just confirm that for me?
Yeah, in general, that's true, the, the house is sort of to the north of the warehouse building, so. Yeah, you see that, it's, there's, there's a little dash line rectangle that shows that it's a, so it's a two-story dwelling. I'm not sure that that's occupied. I'm not sure that that's occupied, but to the north of that yet is there's another dwelling. Right in line with with that. So that's where the dwelling is.
Yeah, but that two story dwelling that's right there on the property line. If you look at your hash line, it goes through the warehouse building. Right, coincident with that facility. So. Well, I don't take exception to it. It's existing. It's it's not non-existent. You know, Ken, I mean, I know that the buildings are there, but. You know, the two story dwelling that's non-conforming, I agree, but it's there. Is that there's a corner of your existing warehouse that is existing in that buffer. So. I just don't want the board to be. You know, misled in that where the buildings are on the adjacent lot, they have the requisite buffer. They don't. And I'm not saying that they should. I'm saying it's existing, but it is what it is. You don't need it, right?
You're correct. And I thought I had pointed that out that we.
Right.
We don't meet the requirements in that location.
No, they need a variance, not a waiver, oh variance.
Absolutely.
I was trying to make it as clear as possible and Jennifer made it as clear as possible.
So Shari, I would ask, I mean, you're here on the call, like, what do you think about the landscaping that they're proposing? Along that coincident property line in the, you know, in the non-developed area? Do you feel that that provides a good buffer? Or should they supplement that with additional or different?
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with what's going in there. I don't really know how much more you can get in. I mean, we do, you know, we could see green lawn in that picture, but. You know, it's not, that plant material is probably pushed back into the trees somewhat, you know, if we've measured it out and laid it into the woods.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't want to create any branch conflicts, you know, as this stuff grows into the driveway there. One thing I maybe you, they might consider to fill it in better. I mean, it won't do much with hate, but. I'm just a little concerned with the shrubs going around the outfall in the woods there. You know, we're just having so much trouble with deer ruining everything. I don't know if that's. It's the best way to, you know, if we really want to put all those shrubs back there since one, no one's gonna see them, but I would just expect the deer to just eat them all. Maybe, maybe we want to shift some of them to fill in some gaps, you know, along the lawn area over there instead.
Sure, we can do that. Absolutely.
Yeah, so because you have, I think they're ink bearing by burnum so that, you know, they could be evergreen. That might be more useful of the shrubs than putting them back there.
Thank you for the guidance.
Okay.
I would just suggest work with Shari on the plant.
We will.
You know, what plants need to go where with her in, under her direction.
Yeah, with field locating will be fine on that. The only other one that I have in my letter, just along Route 9, the shrubs there, they're supposed to be three feet high. So I'll make sure you saw that one because that's a, that's an ordinance.
Okay. No problem.
Thank you.
Another question, along Route 9, is there an existing sidewalk up there?
There is not an existing sidewalk and that request is a waiver of sidewalk. We know full well that we're prepared for the guidance and direction that this board gives to us.
I think you should put the sidewalk in. I mean, I get it. If you're not, people say people don't walk on Route 9, but they do walk on Route 9. And if we continue to require people to put the sidewalk, it will be one. At some point in the future contiguous sidewalk. Um, I mean, if you look, there's a lot of areas along Route 9 where it's, there's no sidewalk, but it's all like. The grass has been eliminated, it looks like a dirt trail. So there are a lot of people that walk and head there. And head to like the bus stops. So I would request the sidewalk.
Peter, Peter Strong, you can get it in there?
Yeah.
We're fine with it and Jennifer.
I mean, Mr. Chair, it's ultimately up to you, but that would be my recommendation.
Now, my next question is, is the building, the retail building, you see how it does the L shape?
Yeah.
The back portion of that, what is that gonna be used for? On the L sheet?
We're asking for all the building to be retail. The deeper portions will most likely be the stored area for the retail that's in the front, but it's still classified as as retail.
Okay, no, I understand that, but you're not gonna break that up and have another business in behind there, correct?
No, no.
That's gonna be part of the front portion.
Businesses will be oriented towards the front of the building. They all have doors from the front of the building.
Well, the reason my question is having access to that rear section, you know, you're kind of limited to being in the parking lot, going in and out.
That, that's why Peter has walkways available, striped walkways to get people to the front of the. My last question of Peter and before I'm finished asking Peter questions. Is with regard to the site signage. Peter, it's my understanding that this property has site signage in place and that you've identified it on your plan. We're not asking this board for any sign relief.
Uh, no, there is an existing sign in the front and we intend to use that. There are also, there are also free building amounted signs that are already in existence.
So no signage, no new signage is requested?
Not at this time, no.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of Mr. Strong. To the extent that the board has continuing questions that are not yet answered, he is available to you and your professionals.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Charlie real quick. Do you have comments or questions for Mr. Strong?
Uh, so I do want to point out, they do need a variance for exceeding the maximum average permitted light candles for the parking area. That's common that we've been seeing with the LED lights. I take no issue to that. What I would just say is that any lights along the north side of the property be installed with house side shields because of there's the residents up there. And then I'd also ask that the applicant be required to switch the lights from 4,000 K to 3,000 K. So we don't have any glare issues with the adjacent residence to the north. Also going back to the, one of the late 80s, 90 approvals. There was a waiver from having to install curb along the north and south site driveway because there was a gravel parking area in the back and the rear. Now that that's all paved, I think it would be best for that all to be curbed. So, you know, the front parking lot ties into the back parking lot. It's maybe I want to say. We're talking about 140 feet on the north and south side of the, of the, of the, the main driveway to the building. Does the applicant have an issue with that, Ken?
The applicant doesn't. I want to hear Peter say that he's comfortable.
I'm sorry. This would be from the. The front of the retail building back towards the warehouse building on the north.
And on the south, yeah. So your curb, yeah, your curb for your front driveway stops right at the east side of the building. Just asking for that to tie into the warehouse and then to tie into your new curb on the south side of the, of the building. To make the whole site complete and keep all stone water on your site and not onto the neighbors.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Okay.
And no problem with the lighting changes either.
That's all I have for Mr. Strong. I'll have some questions for the traffic engineer.
Jennifer?
I don't have anything further than what we discussed earlier. I mean, I guess the only question that I would have is that. Are you committing, and I don't know if it's for you, Mr. Strong, or you, Mr. Pape, that the. Deliveries will be limited to, you know, SU40s because of how it. Circulates and also loads.
Is it WB40 or smaller? So the WB40 or smaller is the vehicle that has historically come to the site and. It'd be like that is the maximum and we can do it with some.
Okay, I'm just, I mean, Mr. Properly, just so that you know, just so that you can put it in the resolution, that's gonna be a limitation.
So no tractor trailer type vehicles, no articulated vehicles?
Well, WB40 isn't articulated vehicle. It's just the size of the trailer is limited.
Right.
WB40.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Board members, Mr. Sayah.
Chairman?
Yes.
Babe? My, my, my thought is, you know, is the applicant willing to apply for Title 39 to ensure. You know, that the the parking is controlled and to the township. Apply with, you know, handicap parking, et cetera. Over.
Yeah, Mr. Sayah, great recommendation. We would be pleased to have the police department enforce Title 39 on the site and make the necessary application.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Cantor?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Moretti?
No questions, Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Martin? Need I mute?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. No questions at this time.
Hey, Mr. Hughes?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Hey, I think I got everybody, didn't I? Everybody else off. Okay, Mr. Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The next witness is Jay Troutman. Jay Troutman is a professional engineer and he'll testify as a traffic expert.
Welcome, Mr. Troutman.
Thank you.
Put us your qualifications, education background?
Yes, sir. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My field of specialty is traffic engineering. I'm a principal with the traffic engineering firm of McDonough and Ray Associates. I've been practicing for 33 years, conducting traffic studies for various types of developments, as well as reviewing. Traffic studies on behalf of the planning and zoning boards that I represent. And I've been accepted at over 100 planning and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey as a traffic expert.
Okay, education?
Including how township, by the way. Educate, yeah, Bachelor of Science in Engineering from Lehigh University and Licensed Professional Engineer.
Yes, sir. I knew that, but I can't answer for you. Okay, welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, I didn't, I'm Lehigh too. I didn't know you were leaving. So Jay, Mr. Troutman, I think the most important part of your testimony is to go right to the adequacy of parking. We do not have the number of stalls that the ordinance identifies as necessary. I'd like you to discuss with the board. Your professional opinion as to whether the parking that is provided will adequately address the parking demand created by these uses, please.
Yes, it is our opinion that it will, and there are several reasons for that. The first one, starting with your existing condition out there, the types of tenants. At this site are are more of a specialty retail type tenant, which tends to have a very low parking ratio. The site is actually surviving on about 22 spaces in the front right now. And and certainly this plan is a major enhancement over that. It's gonna, in my opinion, actually create. Probably more parking than they'll need for the retail. To take you through the ratios, the town code requires. 6.67 parking spaces per thousand square feet. That's a very high requirement in the spectrum of parking rates. It's, it's. Rates we see at medical office type facilities are up in that range. A more, a more intense retail rate would be more like 5.0 per thousand and that would be. That would be a pretty heavy retail rate. If we have 73 of our spaces for the retail, we have a ratio of 4.75 provided. These type of uses are typically generating about two spaces per thousand square feet. So the, the supply that we're proposing, that's the reason I think it's probably even a little on the high end. The other thing I looked at was the distribution of the parking that was in some of the review comments. And the front parking is 25 spaces and then there's an additional 29 spaces. That about the retail in the rear. So you have 54 spaces that are easily walkable to the retail. And that comes to a ratio of 3.5 per thousand. That's still in excess of what actual demand for these types of uses would be. And that's again, just based on existing experience with the tenants. And the type of uses that would come in a building with this configuration.
I'm gonna ask if you, you heard Peter talking about the circulation around the building. And you heard me indicate that the fire chief had also examined the circulation around the building. Are you comfortable that the circulation that's shown on the plan adequately handles the types of vehicles we've identified? WB40 or smaller truck for deliveries, automobiles, emergency vehicles and trash removal vehicles.
Uh, yes, I am. We also did a review of that with Mr. Strong and. Obviously, I would always defer to the fire official and making sure they're satisfied as well, and I was happy to hear that.
My last question of you is, if you could describe to the board the nature of the DOT's review of this application? And what your predictions or projections are of the DOT outcome?
Yes, in our opinion, this will qualify for a letter of no interest from NJDOT. We meet the criteria. For that letter, there's no proposed construction in the right away. There's no significant change in the uses. You know, unless something really silly happened down at DOT, at worst, we would need to. Apply for a new permit that spells out what's on this site and gives us the trips according to their latest. Rates, but it would just be, we'd just be going through a paperwork process. There'd be no construction plans or any of that aspect with that permit.
So if this board were comfortable granting site plan approval, you're comfortable that the driveway configuration shown on there. Will be held by the, will be held up by the DOT?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have nothing further of Mr. Troutman. He is available to you, your board members and your professionals.
Charlie, you're up.
All right, Mr. Troutman, so. I think we said in our letter, the applicant needed a waiver for the dimension of loading areas for the back warehouse building. So the circulation template you have is for, is that a fire truck or is that a WB40 that's shown on the applicant's site plan?
I'd ask Mr. Strong just to confirm that since he did the plan.
Can we bring those plans up?
What's shown on the plan is a fire truck. Forty seven driver truck.
Okay, so WB40 is comparative or smaller than that then? Pete?
Yes.
Okay, so my only concern is you've got some parking spaces along the north side there. You know, the vehicles, if those are all filled up, you know, you could potentially have some access issues with the vehicles, you know, kind of getting stuck in the northeast corner of. Of the parking areas to the northwest of that warehouse building. My recommendation would be to the board is if those four spaces to the northwest of the warehouse. Could be restricted to employees of just the warehouse use, that might negate that issue.
Perfect.
And then I guess for the board, Ken, is the applicant anticipating these vehicles to be parked on the site overnight? Are they just, no?
Not at all. Not anticipated that these are going to be. Not at all. Just not anticipated that these are going to be, um, staging.
Okay, and then, um, Mr. Troutman obviously provided testimony on the existing site being able to accommodate the, you know, with the twenty-two parking spaces that are out there. Um, are you aware of what the current makeup of the, the building is with regarding the uses? I know there was a restriction on furniture store. Do we know historically, has that been primarily occupied as a furniture store? Has it been retail, you know, for a while or?
Um, Mr. Conliff, no one would be able to answer that question better than Matt Howard, but I can tell you that since our client owned it, which is five years, he has not operated it as a furniture store. He didn't know that it was supposed to be. And he repeatedly made applications for the certificates of occupancy for small retail tenants, and they were granted without exception. And I think it was Mr. Howard who first realized that that was in error. Um, but right now, there's a couple of small businesses in there. I haven't, I did not go past it in the last month, but there's a couple of small businesses that are in there and it, typically there's three or four small businesses in, in the building. It has a furniture store in a very long.
So what I would say, Mr. Chairman, is I take no exception to, uh, Mr. Troutman's testimony. And then if it kinda eases the board's mind, uh, there obviously is also, they agreed to do the fire striping throughout the, uh, circulation aisles. And then obviously the Title thirty-nine, so in the event that you did have, you know, the site maximally parked out, you're not gonna have people parking in the aisles. And if they did, you know, you'd have appropriate means to ticket them. So I take no exception, uh, to that. So and then obviously Mr. Troutman said, uh, a letter of no interest and, you know, if they don't, like you said, they're gonna have to get an access permit. And should they require any modification, you know, they'll just have to amend the site plans. But, uh, from what they're, they're doing with the amount of trips, I think they should be under, you know, a hundred trips during a peak hour. So I take no issue with, uh, the testimony that Mr. Mr. Troutman said in regards to the traffic.
Mr. Howard, could, could we hear from you?
Yeah, what, uh, Mr. Page had said is absolutely correct. This was a long lost condition and a, an approval from, I think it was the eighties. So it came up during a certificate of continued occupancy, change in tenancy, um, request. But I'd come across it, uh, since then, we've been in communication with Mr. Page and the owner of the site to, you know, remedy these issues. Um, the site plan you have before you is to do just that, um, to seek relief from those items. And, uh, this is, that's pretty much why they're here.
Do you have any issues with what they're proposing to do?
Not with the proposal. I mean, we've definitely had some property maintenance issues out there. So I'd like to just, you know, make sure, Mr. Page, you can pass that on to your client, that those don't become an issue again in the future. Um, and that the uses that are approved here are stuck to, we've had a couple of different things going on in some of the buildings there, especially the back building. So, um, with the new resolution, it's gonna be definitely looked at and enforced. Uh, but as for the proposal, I mean, really my say is limited. I mean, what they're putting out here is, it looks reasonable and it's up to the board to, to kinda weigh in.
Well, I, I understand that, but I, on the township aspect, does that, you know, do you see any issues going forward?
No.
Okay. And so basically, your response is, is, as far as maintenance, correct?
Oh, and, and the usage of all the, the buildings. Uh, like I said, the back building had some different things going on in it. Um, so we wanna make sure that's tightened up. Um, and then having, you know, having it become a regular shopping center, um, with those uses permitted in the front, not being restricted to a furniture store, I mean, really simplifies my job going forward with tenants.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Duly noted. We'll make certain that our client is so advised. And I saw Mr. Tropoli writing, I'm sure it's gonna be in a resolution if there is one.
Charlie, you have any further?
Yeah, just, just one last item. So I, I, there was a note on the plan that said the warehouse could have up to thirteen employees. Is that like maximum possible, Ken, that you guys would, the, the applicant anticipates?
But we're anticipating four, but I think that that count was, was following an ordinance application. We're, we're anticipating that the, the maximum number of employees associated with the, um, it's a storage building. It says, you know, small storage building would be, would be two on each side. Two sides to the building.
All right. Would the applicant have an issue with agreeing to a condition on that or, you know?
No.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and then, Mr. Page, hi. Charlie had made a mention earlier. Do you have an issue with those four parking spaces in the rear, uh, be limited to employee parking?
The, um, the, it's a great recommendation. We, he, he, he put it on the record before we were gonna offer it. We like it. Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer.
I don't have any questions for the traffic engineer, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sayah.
No, I'm good, sir. I, um, I just always lament how when I first got to town, I would always wonder why that furniture store was so small and it was always on the wrong side of the highway when all the other furniture stores were on the northbound side. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that we're gonna get some good use out of that, that site, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Cantor.
No questions, Chairman Hanson.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No questions, Mr. Chairman, but thank you.
Mr. Moretti.
No questions, sir.
Mr. Martin.
No questions at this time.
Mr. Hughes.
Nope, I'm good for now, sir.
I think they got everybody. Okay, Mr. Page.
Sure. M- Mr. Chairman, I was going to introduce Steve Redasti, the architect, but I'm gonna ask the board's indulgence. The, Mr. Redasti's requirement was to design facade treatments for the rear warehouse building and to do so in a manner that was consistent with the front of the building, so it was no longer just a, a, a barren building. And instead of presenting his testimony, I would respectfully ask if I could ask if Ms. Beam has reviewed his plans. And we all know that if Ms. Beam is.
I have looked at, um, Mr. Chair and I actually have to say, I know it's a miracle and you guys are gonna be passed out when I say this, but he's done a really good job at making that building look less gross. So it, he really has done a very good job. And I submit to the board that I'm perfectly satisfied with what he has provided. So I don't know if you guys want to present it, that's up to you guys. But as far as I'm concerned, he's done what he's needed to do.
So the notes are less gross, okay?
Less gross. No, it's way less gross.
Oh, yeah, I, I like that.
Exactly. It looks really, it's, it's a huge improvement over what's there now, in my opinion. And he's done a very good job at breaking it up and making it look consistent with the building in the front and giving it some kind of like dimensions without, you know, I mean, it's an existing building, so there's limits to what you can do. But I do think he's done a really good job with it.
I, I'm gonna take.
And by the way, Steve, you should take this and memorialize it because I don't usually say this.
We, we can omit the architectural testimony.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Beam, and thank you, Chairman. So that brings us to Allison Coffin, who I know is having some technical difficulties. Back, Allison?
I'm back.
Okay.
Rebooted the router, so.
So planning testimony is required, notwithstanding that we've shown you plans that we, that, that have been the combined work product of our team working with your professionals, notwithstanding that we've gained support from others, other agencies. There's D two relief that's required for what we are presenting to you. And I'm gonna ask if Allison could, and in that, and, and Allison testified earlier this evening, Mr. Chair. Do you wish to acknowledge her credentials and allow?
I, I kinda let each case stand on its own, so just for a clear record, I, I would just give me your education and your employment background, that's it.
I have a bachelor's degree from Boston College. I have a professional planner's license. I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners and I'm employed by James W. Higgins Associates.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you. Allison, I'm gonna ask if you could do this efficiently in a narrative. I always think it's important for the board to know the nature of the investigation that you and, you went through to be prepared to testify. And then take us through the positive and negative criteria. And if you would share your professional opinion on whether the board has sufficient information and facts before to grant the relief requested.
Sure. To prepare for tonight, I visited the subject site. I met with the applicant's professionals. I read the board's professionals' reports. I familiarized myself again with the zoning ordinance in the master plan. Uh, the applicant is requesting permission to improve an existing property that has a pre-existing non-conforming use on it, that warehouse, uh, which was approved in nineteen ninety when it was permitted. And as the result of subsequent ordinance changes, has been made non-conforming. Um, so we're requesting a D two variance to technically expand the use by nature of improving, uh, other features on the site. And there are some variance conditions, um, that are pre-existing and some that are, are proposed that the applicant is requesting permission for. Uh, it's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the variances and that the site, um, can accommodate the expansion of the use. There's no significant detriment to the public or to the zone plan or the surrounding properties that would result from these variances. Special reasons exist for the granting of the D two variances to expand the pre-existing non-conforming use and to continue the presence of two, uh, principal structures on this property. The New Jersey Supreme Court in Burbidge versus the governing body of Mine Hill Township examined the criteria to be considered by boards when you're looking at a D two variance. The court determined that when the special reasons concept is applied to the expansion of an existing non-conforming use, things such as appearance, aesthetics and the compatibility of the use with the surrounding neighborhood become uniquely significant, especially if there's no evidence that this use will be discontinued. In this instance, the site contains a pre-existing non-conforming warehouse use in the rear in combination with a second principal structure, uh, which is a permitted retail use in the front. And the applicant is requesting permission to change that permitted retail use from a furniture store use to a multiple tenanted retail structure. The structures are not themselves being increased in size, but the use is technically being expanded in two ways. And the first is that conversion of the lower intensity furniture store retail use to a slightly more intense retail shopping center, which could increase activity on the site. And the second is the expansion of the parking and circulation to support the change of use, which increases the intensity of the development of the site by adding, uh, additional impervious coverage and parking facilities. The site plan proposed, uh, expands the use in a manner which improves the function and efficiency and the aesthetic impact of the property. First, we have the conversion of the furniture store to a more viable multi-tenanted retail structure. Then we have the creation of additional parking to support this use on the site. Uh, we have improved onsite circulation. We have aesthetic improvements, including significant landscaping at the frontage and throughout the perimeter of the property and also a way less gross warehouse building, if I may borrow the technical term from Ms. Beam. Um, and lastly, we have the creation of formal stormwater management for a property that currently does not have former, former, formal stormwater management. The requested D variances can be granted without detriment. There is no detriment to the requested D two variances, in my opinion. Uh, there is no increase in the size of the non-conforming use on the site. The warehouse structure itself will not be enlarged. The change in the use of the retail building is consistent with the uses permitted in the ordinance. And the proposed site plan ensures that the site can accommodate the uses better than the existing site plan does. The proposed bulk, bulk variances can be granted without detriment. The lot and side yard setbacks are existing conditions. The buffer variance that's being requested can be granted under the C one hardship standard here. The existing structures and driveway on the north side of the site are located within this required buffer. The applicant is providing the full fifty-foot buffer wherever possible in areas of the site where there are not existing features within the buffer. An additional evergreen landscaping is proposed within the buffer adjacent to the residential structure on the, the neighboring property to provide a more complete screen. The parking variance that we're requesting, the parking is, that's proposed, is sufficient to support the use, as was testified by our traffic expert. The proposed variances would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. The warehouse and the presence of two principal structures are pre-existing non-conforming uses that are already present on the site. We're not introducing a new non-conforming condition there. The technical expansion of these does not create any new impact on the master plan and zoning ordinance. And the purpose of the HD one zone is to provide for highway-oriented development. The proposed uses and improvement to this site are consistent with this purpose. Uh, so the essence of this application is to renovate and improve a thirty-year-old mixed-use property. And though a D variance relief is necessary due to the technical expansion of the pre-existing uses on the rear of the site, the conversion of the front building for mixed retail, the creation of additional parking and the modernization of stormwater management and the additional landscaping throughout the site provides the special reasons necessary to support the granting of the requested variance relief. The variances can be granted without detriment to the health, safety and general welfare of the public. And the application would result in the improvement of the site in a manner which is consistent with the intent of the master plan and the development ordinance. Therefore, I believe the board is within its powers to grant the variance relief that's requested.
Mr. Chair, I have no examination of Allison and she is available to the board and your professionals.
Jennifer.
I don't disagree with anything that was presented. I think that, you know, cleaning up this property is a benefit. I think that aesthetically, this will be, um, a nice addition. I think that adding landscaping to the buffer is a benefit. I think that cleaning up the way the warehouse looks is a benefit. So I have no, uh, I have no objection to the testimony that's been presented.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Um, just kind of a, a quick question. Uh, so, uh, there was a letter issued by the Mountain County Board Health and this isn't necessarily a, a question for Allison. I just wanna ask Ken this before we wrap it up. Uh, there was an existing well on the site. They said, uh, uh, if it's, just make sure you're complying with Mountain County Board Health on abandonment of the well or, or any proper licensing if it's gonna be used for irrigation. And they had a comment about there about any internal use of the building for food services or a restaurant or anything like that would require approval from them. Uh, does the applicant anticipate any restaurant use of the building, Ken?
There's no anticipated uses. Our client has kept his, 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 um, his plans in check awaiting the board's determination. We would stipulate that unless it is expressly permitted in the HD one zone, it will not be in the building. Um, but the, the potential for food-related uses exists. It's, there's no plan.
Okay, yeah. My concern, Mr. Chair, is obviously they're, you know, they're getting a, um, relief for a parking based on a retail use. You know, a restaurant could be a little bit more of an intensive traffic generator or y- y- you're gonna have trips that stay there longer, you know, if it's during the evening when people are, are there to dine. Um, that would just be my concern with a restaurant use in, in the site there. Uh, I don't know if it's something that Mr. Troutman can, can kinda touch on real quick, Ken?
Mr. Troutman, I'll, I'll, I'll begin by telling you that it's, in the past, we have agreed that a percentage of the building would be the maximum portion that's a restaurant. And in this instance, I would ask that the board consider that the maximum that would ever be dedicated to re- restaurant, that's would be twenty-five percent of the building. Mr. Troutman, would you have an opinion as to whether the parking adequacy would continue? If there was up to, um, twenty-five percent of the retail building and that was restaurant dedicated?
Uh, with that limitation, uh, I think the site could support because I believe right now it's actually overparked. If you don't have any uses like that, so there's room for that twenty-five percent, but I would, uh, want that cap in place, you know, to be comfortable.
Yeah, I think that's a, a good recommendation, Mr. Chair, and I, I think that should be a condition of the approval, just so that way you don't have a, you know, a hundred percent restaurant space or something like that, or fifty percent, and then that causing, you know, parking issues on the site.
I didn't hear anything. I- is this site on septic or is it?
Exactly, Mr. Chairman. That's a, that's what I wanted to hear.
Okay, and is served by public water?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, Peter. Yes.
That all, Charlie?
That is it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Sayah, any final que- Okay. Mr. Sayah, any final questions?
Yeah, I do. I, the building in the back, I just wanted to ask about the structural integrity of that building. Since you are going to be propping it up and giving it a facelift, that would go for Mr. Redassi. Thought to me.
Mr. Redasti's credentials have not been put on the record this evening, so we'll begin with that. Mr. Redasti, please share your education, professional background.
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I graduated from New Jersey Institute of Technology with a Bachelor of Architecture degree in 1992 and became licensed in 1996. Currently a principal at Perez and Redasti Associates. We design architecture, interior design, some construction management. I've presented in front of Halle Township several times and through dozens of towns throughout the state of New Jersey.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
You want to answer Mr. Sayah's question?
If you could begin by confirming that you, before you designed this building, that you personally inspected this building?
I did, yes. I inspected the building. The building is a prefabricated metal building with the steel structure, steel frame, metal siding. I personally took a look at the building and I found it in acceptable condition. During the renovation, if there's anything that we feel needs to be upgraded structurally, we would do that at that time.
Does that address your question?
That addresses my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further, Mr. Sayah?
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cantor?
Sorry, I have no questions, Chairman.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moretti? You need to unmute.
You're muted. Still muted.
Mr. Moretti, you need to unmute.
I got it. I got it. That's unusual for me because I'm usually a chatterbox. Based upon, based upon our professionals' analysis and Mr. Stair's question, I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Martins?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hughes?
As always, as it seems, when Mr. Pate presents, everything is pretty well covered and I'm in good shape. Thank you.
Okay. Well, at this time, I'll take a motion to open the public?
Now, are we open to public?
Who, who moved that?
Moretti, Moretti.
Mr. Moretti, we'll have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Cantor.
Okay, Mr. Cantor, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Eileen, if you want to open the public, we'll open the public for comments and questions.
At this time, the board has opened the hearing up for 6520 LLC for questions or comments from members of the public. If you are watching or listening to the hearing, you can raise your hand and you will be brought into the meeting to ask your questions. We'll give you a couple of minutes and then we'll close the public. There are no members of the public currently on the Zoom meeting.
What about phone?
No, they would, they would still be showing up on the meeting and we're not seeing anyone.
Okay.
Make a motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mr. Sayah. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, sir.
Second by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Mr. Pape? It's all yours.
Well, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, one, want to thank all of the board members for the thoroughness of their review of the materials that were presented this evening and also for the kind words that were placed on the record. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is an application for D2 relief as eloquently described by Allison Coffin. Essentially to repurpose the, the, the front retail building to be a general retail building and to seek permission to maintain the warehouse that exists, notwithstanding that the zone has changed. You've heard all of the improvements that the applicant is offering to the town. There are environmental improvements, aesthetic improvements, and safety improvements, all of which collectively, I believe, justify the granting of the relief. We ask the board to consider the use variance, preliminary site plan, and the bulk variance and design waiver relief that have been described on the record this evening favorably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. And I, I just want to tell you, it's such a pleasure to have you before the board. I've been here a long time and you're always prepared. And
Always prepared. I, they make me look good, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it, it takes a director to put it in place. And you ought to really start a professor of zoning board training is what you ought to do. But I, I really appreciate that. And I know our professionals do. And also the board member, because you're not here wasting our time. And I really appreciate that. And with that said, I'd like to ask what the pleasure of the board is.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sayah?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the bulk variance, the major site plan and ancillary bulk variance, the D1, the C1, or the D2 and the C1. As long as Mr. Tropoli has all of the other notes that have been taken relative to, you know, the testimony and the questioning, I'd like to make a motion to make, to approve this application, sir.
Mr. Sayah, I just want to make sure you are aware that they are actually asking for a use variance, right? A D2 with a use variance.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that I, I agree with what you submitted, but I just want to make sure that you're aware that it's a use variance as well.
Add that to the record. Amen. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Sayah. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Mr. Sayah. The professionals, I think, did a great job giving us a good guideline for what we want here. And I also think the applicant did a good job presenting this case. I'm very happy with the landscaping and I think it's going to look a lot better than it does now. So I'm going to second this application.
Okay, second by Mr. Martins. Can we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Mr. Hughes?
Yes, I would like to just also add a couple of items. The improvements in the stormwater management, putting in the sidewalks and the curbing. The lighting change that was mentioned, I guess from 3,000 to 4,000. The Oh, it wasn't, I'm sorry, 4,000 to 3,000. Thank you. Restrict those four spaces for employees, with the four employees for the warehouse. And our new technical term, the way less gross beautification of the back building, I'd like to say yes.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
I too agree with all of my fellow board members. I, I think it's going to improve that site. I think not just improve it, but it's going to be a lot better than the ice floor that's there existing. And so my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Pate, and thank you, professionals. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good night, all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, Ken.
I just want to remind everybody, I'll look up in the sky, the planets are, we've got several planets that are visible at night right now.
Oh, cool.
You've got Mercury, you've got Mars, Saturn.
Venus.
All of them are, are in the sky.
Oh, neat. I'm going to go out and check it out right now.
Yes, sir. So anyway.
Is that the reason why it went so smoothly?
What's that?
Is that the reason why this went so smoothly?
Retrograde anymore, so.
Clearly, the answer to that is yes.
So anyway, I appreciate everybody's attendance and I appreciate the professionals. I, I think everything went excellent. And, you know.
We love Zoom.
Yep.
Much better. Yeah.
So at that point, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Hughes?
Moretti, I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Don't forget, we have a meeting next week?
Seven o'clock. I already sent you the agenda.
Wonderful.
Okay, please send me a package.
I did. I mailed it already.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.
Safe week.
You too.
You as well.
Bye-bye.